All right, this meeting is called to order. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to this joint meeting of the Boynton Beach Community Redevelopment Agency Board and City of Boynton Beach Commission. Today's Tuesday, September 12th, 2023, and the time is now 5:35 PM. Let's all stand for the invocation, which will be led by Board Member Hay, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance led by Board Member Kelly.
Let us pray. Oh, Lord, our God, how excellent is thy name in all the earth. Gracious and heavenly Father, as we gather here today as members of the CRA and as members of the City Commission of Boynton Beach, Florida, we humbly seek your guidance and your blessing. We acknowledge the importance of our mission, which is to revitalize and uplift our beloved community. We recognize the challenges ahead and the responsibility that rests upon our shoulders. Grant us the wisdom to make the decision that will enhance the quality of life for all residents. May our action be rooted in justice, fairness, and compassion. As we embark on the journey, as we ask for your divine inspiration, unite among our team and perseverance in the face of adversity. Lord, may the work of our hands be a source of hope, opportunity, progress for the people of Boynton Beach. May we be faithful stewards of the trust placed in us. And also, Lord, remember those families directly affected 22 years ago, as we remember the offer day of 9/11/2001. May God bless these United States of America. It is in your name that we pray. Let every heart say amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, its republic, whose strength, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you, everyone. I'm going to ask, to be honest with you, I'm not sure who's doing the roll call. City Clerk?
Mayor, Chair, Pensilvania.
Here.
Vice Mayor, Vice Chair Turkin. He's not on. Commissioner, Board Member Cruz?
Here.
Commissioner, Board Member Hay?
Here.
Commissioner, Board Member Kelly?
Here.
Mayor, Chair, you have a quorum.
Thank you so much. We're going to move on to Agenda approval additions, deletions, corrections to the agenda. There are none for myself. There's only one item on the agenda. I can't imagine anything being amended. Is there anything from my colleagues? Okay. With that, may the motion to approve the agenda as presented. I heard the motion from Commissioner Kelly. I heard the second from, excuse me, Commissioner Board Member Kelly, and the second from Commissioner Board Member Hay. All those in favor of the motion say aye. Aye. All those who oppose, they know the ayes have it. Motion passes unanimously. Agenda is so approved. Legal, any brief updates?
No, just want to introduce myself, Catherine Rossmell, on behalf of the Community Redevelopment Agency here tonight. And Board Chair/Mayor, I'm sure if you just want to pick one particular title for your colleagues and run with it, that will be perfectly fine for tonight.
Yes. And I'm going to turn now to the City Attorney.
Good evening, David Tulsa, Centered City Attorney here this evening. Good to see everyone. Look forward to a good meeting.
All right. Good and brief, I hope. Let us move on to informational items and disclosures by Board Members and CRA staff. We're just going to go around the dais. Let's begin on my left this time. Board Member Kelly, if you have any informational items or disclosures to make.
I do not have any informational items or disclosures, thank you.
All right, thank you, Board Member Hay.
I'm good.
Okay. Board Member Cruz?
Same for me.
Anyone else to add? With that... What was that? We're going to turn now to public comments. This public comment section of the meeting is for public comments and items on the consent agenda, and there are no consent agenda items or items that are not on the agenda. If you would like to speak on either of those two, now would be the time to approach the podium. Seeing no one approaching the podium in the audience, public comments are now closed. Ms. Kervman, is there anybody online with their digital hands raised?
No, hands are raised at this time.
All right, with that, public comments are closed, online and in person. We're going to turn now to the one and only one item of business for this particular joint meeting. It is the Joint City CRA Meeting Regarding Discussion and Consideration of Draft Scope to Amend the 2016 Community Redevelopment Plan. I will turn now to our Executive Director, Twee Shutt, to introduce the item and to give us the draft scope.
Sure. Good evening, Mayor and Chair. I don't know if you picked selected yet. Just want to make sure we also introduce the City Manager, Mr. Stand Uggler. So this item's before you. You should have at your podium, at the podium, a map, a printed map of the CRA, BB CRA, Boynton Beach CRA area. Vicki can also put that up if we, for the members of the audience who are watching. So this item is before you to allow the City Commission and the CRA Board to give staff direction, both City Staff and CRA Staff direction on the scope of work for the CRA Plan Amendment. Just a brief background, the CRA, the last adoption of the CRA Plan or approval of the CRA Plan was done in 2016. It's due, it was consensus of the CRA Board to look at amending the CRA Plan, to update any statutory requirements, any development practices, and in general, just to look at the overall, you know, plan to map out what could be, what has been done, what we're doing now, and what is left to be done in our remaining 20 years. We sunset in 2044. So the CRA area consists of 1,500 acres, and there are six different districts or little sub-areas within the CRA District. The CRA also comprises land to the east and west of federal highway along the Commercial Corridor, as well as our namesake, the Boynton Beach Boulevard, Corridor from Northwest 7th Street, which is near the Industrial Craft District, west of 95, all the way up to the Intercoastal Waterway, and then also part of Wilbright, east of the FEC Railroad, as well as all the way to, again, the Intercoastal Waterway. So this gives you an idea of the area. And, you know, the CRA receives 95% of the ad valorem taxes from the city and the county. We are not a taxing agency. And this CRA Plan is really our guidance, our guideline, or our bible in which we redevelop areas that are in need of infrastructure and the need of redevelopment, as well as the provision for affordable housing. So in general, we are, we exist to help the city eliminate slum and blight, to stabilize the tax, and to build, really to do economic development as well as support some of our businesses in the area. With that, I can just direct your attention, if I may, to Attachment 1, which is the preliminary scope of work that the CRA Board had given us a consensus to move forward.
Could we have someone open that attachment before you move on, just so we can follow along simultaneously?
Sure, I believe Vicki can put that on the, on the screen. So the way the, the request or proposal for the Planning Services works is we will have a scope of work. This is a general description of what a consultant would look at when they're looking to pursue the project and get the job, right? To, to go, usually there are different tasks in the scope of work in the RFP, Request or Proposal Document. Those are enumerated in this, on the screen, under Attachment 1, as Task 1, 2, 3, so on and so forth, all the way up to, Vicki, if you can scroll down. All the way through 6. So these are just descriptive things that they would have to look at and price out to respond for the work when we issue this. What we're going to be looking and asking direction from the Commission and CRA Board is, tonight is on Task 1 and 2. Do we want to include the option of the interested parties when they give a proposal to modify the CRA boundary? This is not to decide now, it's just to give us direction when we finalize the RFP.
If that should be even included in the scope, is that correct?
Exactly, exactly. So, one of the few reasons why you would look at that is if you look at the boundary map, we have distinct areas in which neighborhood are included in the CRA District, and then across the street, it may not be included. So if there's a joint infrastructure project within that area, CRA funds cannot be utilized outside of the CRA boundaries. So one of the reason, what you look at is if you would like, for those future projects, if you would like CRA contribution for that. And in the attachment, in the cover as well, we also have the Florida statutory requirements, what it takes for CRA Plan Amendment, what it takes for changing the boundaries as well. So primarily, if you're expanding the boundary, there's got to be a finding of necessity, and we also have to have the various different taxing district. In this, in our case, it'll be the county would have to approve the expansion for anything that is a modification to delete. Again, we'd have to go through those processes as we would when we hire the consultant if this is a task for the board and commission. Here for questions, if there's any questions.
All right. Well, thank you so much, Twee. I'm going to begin to my right. Board Member Cruz, if you have any questions or comments.
Can you guys hear me?
Oh, hello, Vice Mayor and Vice Chair. We were not sure if you were present.
I'm here.
And, but we're glad that you are here. So thank you for letting us know.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, Board Member Cruz, go ahead.
No, I was just going to have to defer to my colleague.
Okay. All right, sounds good. Board Member Hay, any thoughts for now or questions?
Well, I guess, depending on what decision we make, it only has to go to the county. They have to approve whatever decision we make?
Not with the scope. It's later on, if you decide to have any modification to the existing boundary, then the consultant will have to go and do the research and do, as part of the CRA Plan Amendment, they will report back what is needed for that. So they'll have to do what's enumerated in Task 2, 1 and 2. So this is only to see if you would want that in the scope for them to price the workout.
If we were to increase the boundary, would we get additional funding from the county?
That's, you're correct in that if you increase the boundary, we would have to do the finding of necessity, and we'll have to go through the requirements. I know David and Catherine can weigh in on the procedures.
But there's nothing to say that the county have to do that. They could deny us, couldn't they? And what the impact of that would be? We just won't have the funding to do the additional areas that we have added, that...
We won't have CRA funding, but the city can certainly, you know...
If I may jump in here a little bit?
Go ahead.
Sure. So this, your CRA is in a bit of a unique position in that you were created as a CRA before Palm Beach County became a charter county, which means that under the statutes, you almost operate as if you're in a non-charter county, which is a little bit, we're, we're one of, I think, two or three CRAs in the state where that's the case. So what that means is when you are considering a change in boundaries and an expansion, the way that it will work logistically, if you decide to take that route, and there's the finding of slum and blight, and you go through this process, is you'll provide notice to every taxing authority that taxes in your area, one of those being the county. The county will have the opportunity within 30 days to weigh in and say whether or not they had alternate plans for the funds that would then come to the CRA as TIF. Because if you expand the boundaries, in direct answer to your question, Commissioner, then yes, the, that increment of revenue would come to the CRA, so you would potentially get more funding for the CRA. If the county objects to your plan, then you all have 90 days to host a meeting together. It's jointly chaired by, it would be, be you, Mayor, and your authorities as the mayor of the city, who is considered the governing body of the CRA, and the, the Board of County Commissioners. And they can propose an alternate plan. And at any point, you all can work out through, on sort of an alternative dispute resolution process that's available to local governments through the Florida statutes. But it, it isn't a direct veto process, but it does involve the county. It would involve public meetings. You all would have to work together to get, and then, you know, of course, the county may find that it wants to take other legal actions to prevent adoption of a plan that it finds objectionable.
So as I hear, the big advantage would be, an increase in the boundaries would be the acquisition of additional lands that are not available to us right now because of the line stops here and you can't go across the line? What, what are the other advantages that, that I missed?
Well, I'm, as your attorney, I'm a little loath to qualify things as advantages or disadvantages. But I will say that when you do the finding of necessity, which is required to put something into a CRA area, what you're looking for is an area that qualifies as slum or blight. So it's an area that has been identified as having one of a number, or a certain number of characteristics that are indicative of an area that is in need of a little extra assistance. And so if you expand that area, the CRA is able to provide funding to that area in a way that is a little bit different than is typically done by the city. So it just expands the opportunities for redevelopment of that area. So the funding that you get from the county is associated with that effort. So if you want to, if you think of redevelopment as an advantage, then that would also be considered an advantage of expanding the plan.
One other question for right now. Right now, we have 1,650 acres. What would be the number that we're looking at if we decide to increase the CRA boundary?
So again, I think the question before you tonight is whether that should even be examined by whoever is hired to be a consultant. And so they would take a comprehensive look at whether there are areas that might qualify for classification as slum and blight under the statute and bring that to you. We don't know at this moment what those areas would be. And then the other thing, of course, that you can consider is whether it should be, the boundary should be contracted. That's also available to you. And you could also direct your consultant, if you wanted to include that in their scope of work. So there is no proposal before you tonight to add a specific area. It's, the only question before you tonight is whether you would like to direct your staff to add that question to the scope of work to whatever consultant you ultimately hire.
Okay, just deciding whether or not we want to pursue that.
Yes, sir, that's correct.
But one other, just refresh...
Many as you like.
How do we, you determine the formula for slum and blight?
So Twee's going to jump in here as well, but there are, there are statutory, there are statutory requirements that determine what is considered slum and blight. I can certainly give you a flavor of them if you'd like. So slum and blight under the CRA statutes are defined terms. They mean slightly different things. I can run through the different criteria if you'd like.
No, I, can you?
Oh, and, and Vicki conveniently has it on the screen for you. There you go.
I don't want to go into a lot of detail, just, you know, layman's term. Just kind of give me a...
Areas with higher crime, areas with building deterioration, areas of impoverishment. Infant mortality is one of the characteristics. There are buildings in need of reconstruction and sort of areas that, that appear to be a little bit economically depressed. Those types of situations are where CRAs are often employed to sort of direct funds to that area. I mean, that's, that is somewhat how the area is functioning.
So how can part of our downtown area buildings, which look sort of nicely, be included in the CRA District?
So when your CRA was established, it, they would have had to qualify as slum and blight, and there would have been findings made to that effect. Their later correction is a benefit of the CRA having done its work. The benefit to the CRA of that is that it gets the increased tax revenue that those now more economically viable places now generate. So if the CRA puts funding into, we'll call it a downtown area, that downtown area is, now hosts a, an economically viable building that has a substantially higher tax base. That tax increment, those higher taxes that that property now pays, 95% of that comes back to the CRA. So that's, and then the CRA is able to take that benefit and apply those monies that it received. Either sometimes a portion of it is given back to that project as one of the incentives to build. As you know, we do the tax increment revenue funding agreements for that purpose. And then the remainder of those funds, to the extent that they're not used that way, are, go to other areas within the CRA District for that same purpose. So it isn't though, as though something that becomes, that is resolved by the CRA becomes immediately excluded from the boundary because you'd want the CRA to receive the benefit of the work that it's done so it can employ those funds in the rest of the district.
Okay.
If I can, if I may, Vicki, it's Attachment 2, and it's page 4. It has a definition of slum area, means area having physical, economic condition conducive to disease, infant mortality, juvenile delinquency, poverty, or crime because there's a predominant, predominance of building or improvements, whether residential or non-residential, which are impaired by reasons of dilapidation, deterioration, age, or obsolescence, and exhibiting one or more of the following factors. And it lists, you know, several factors, three factors. A, inadequacy, inadequate provisions for ventilation, light, air sanitation, open space, high density of population compared to population density of adjacent areas within the county or municipality, and overcrowding, as indicated by government maintained statistics or other studies as required by the Florida Building Code, or the existence of conditions that endanger life or property by fire or other causes. And then it also has, goes through for the blighted area, what that means. So there, there are requirements.
So what I hear you saying is that the development of those downtown area generates resource funding for the ones that are really not as...
Correct, because that, those downtown areas, when they were originally put into the CRA, were not economic generators in the way that they are now. Now, having said that, I want to be very clear that if you are looking at an area that is already sort of economically viable and does not cause slum and blight, you cannot simply add that to a CRA for its taxes to be used in the area. It must be, it must start out as an area that qualifies as slum and blight, right? And there, but there may be areas that you've looked at and you feel like you've done their, they have done their job, and there is no more purpose for them to be in the CRA. That is an acceptable finding for you to make. I just want to be clear that it, it, you do not automatically have to exclude something from the CRA once it is, is risen out of what would normally be considered slum and blight at the outset.
Thank you for your clarification.
Absolutely.
That's it for me right now.
Thank you, Board Member. We can always go another round. Board Member Kelly, and then we'll go to Vice, Vice Chair.
Um, so when we, when we're talking about the task, and we're talking about, and the, I guess, Task 1, the way it's worded, would be to review adjacent areas for inclusion. But where are we talking about, or can that task be modified to also include reviewing adjacent, or reviewing CRA areas to see if there are sections of the CRA boundary that, like Catherine just said, don't maybe necessarily need to stay within the CRA anymore? Because I'm going to put my City Commissioner hat on real quick and, you know, just talk about the fact that those are funds that, that could come back to the city as opposed to it going into the CRA. So I, although I recognize and understand the purpose of the funding going to the CRA to enhance that land as well, on the reverse side too, as the city, we also have to look at being fiscally responsible. If we have areas within the CRA that are tax generators that could benefit the city as a whole, then I think we need to look at that as well. And so I just want to, I want to know where, how that task can be worded so that it...
So you can direct us to look in that and revise that task and bring the overall final RFP back. But with that, I would also recommend that as we do this, it's just not the area because there are other projects that are dependent on TIF agreements, other commitments. You know, again, debt service that has been approved or worked on, knowing that there's revenue at that set boundary when, when those deals are done. So that also needs to be included under the consultant's review. So yes, obviously, we can amend that to make sure that we include, you know, areas that can be taken out if the redevelopment has occurred and with no negative or potential impacts to the city or any other debt service requirements or financial requirements.
Right, I mean, of course, that, I feel like that, you know, we, we wouldn't want to do something, and I would, I would expect and hope that that would be part of the scope, is that we would learn what the pros and cons would be of making any changes before we went any further. We would know, looking at it, if you did this, this is what the ramifications would be, or this is what the positives would be. And to know that, I think that that is, is key in us making really any decisions. You know, we, we have to know the, the whole picture, not just, you know, just one little part of it.
So Board Member, I just want to make sure I understood what you said. You are proposing that we amend Task 1 to say, not just to look into potential areas of inclusion, but potential areas of exclusion as well? And so once we have that information, we can assess whether to shrink, expand, or shift around? Is that what you're saying essentially?
Yes.
Okay.
You would probably add then potential inclusion or contraction, you know, versus exclusion?
Yes, contraction sounds much nicer.
And then we'll, we'll work with the attorneys to see what the right language that may be that would require the research into that, not just to look at the boundaries, but really have the, the research done so you can fully be aware of what your choices are.
Right, okay.
Obvious with the consultant, we're hoping also there'll be interviews, stakeholders interview, commissioners interview, crab board, whoever the board would, would like to do as we define and negotiate the scope. Once the CRA Board sees the presentation of the team that's coming forward and pick the best qualified one, and then we'll be working with fine tuning for the contract for this planning consultant or this consultant to do the plan.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Board Member. I'm going to turn now to Vice Chair Turkin for any questions or comments.
Mayor, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, perfect. Um, I don't, I don't have too much to add. Catherine and, and Twee really kind of summed up some of my questions. I just want to compliment what Commissioner Kelly had mentioned in reference to maybe shifting or redrawing some of the lines for the CRA. You know, I hear all the time, specifically from the Inca Community, you know, which is a pretty heavy tax base in the city. It's a lot of waterfront property, that they're complaining about roads not being done, and, you know, you know, some infrastructure issues. And so, you know, with properties like that, I think the goal has been accomplished. So personally, I would, I would definitely like to look at where we could redraw specifically on the east side of federal highway. So then that way, we can give back to these homeowners and residential properties via city taxes. I think, you know, we just got through budget and everything, and, you know, I think we're, we're really pinching pennies here, and I think this is an avenue to explore. I do understand that we would lose some money, I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, Twee, from the county, if we did resize our district, our CRA district. So I'd really like to look at what that would be versus incorporating those tax dollars into the city. But I, I think there's definitely a lot more exploration that needs to be done, but I think it is time to look at what communities we need to serve in the purview of the CRA and in the purview of the city, and make sure that those tax dollars are being affected. Because, you know, we see all this downtown development and growth, right? And majority of those revenues are going back to the CRA, but the impact is, you know, the residents in the CRA can only do so much. As we know, we seem to be limited in how we spend our dollars each year, you know, eliminating events, et cetera. And so I, I don't know what the answer is, but I, I think it's, it's time for us to solve it because it's been an ongoing problem for years and years and years, especially on the east side of federal. So I'll leave my comments at that. I do agree with Commissioner Kelly. I think it's something to explore. You know, and, and not, not just looking at the east side, you know, Boynton Beach, but, you know, generating more dollars, you know, in the, in the city's coffers would allow us to help, you know, move west of 95, where maybe there's not a lot of slum and blight, and have more, you know, funds to, you know, do, do more infrastructure repairs, road repairs, you know, whatever we want to do on the west side of 95, that District 144, that may not, you know, that may not qualify to be in the CRA District. So I'm just trying to think long-term here. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chair. Any follow-up to any comments? I did hear a proposal from Board Member Kelly. I believe that was a sign of support from Vice Chair Turkin. Is there anyone else that would be interested in making that amendment for not just the potential inclusion, but also potential contraction of the district? We can include that in the scope in Task 1. We can include that in the scope in task one.
I don't have a problem with it.
Okay, all right. So please keep in mind that before us is just the scope and what we want to get priced out. We're not actually making any decisions on the boundaries today, and with that, I will support that amendment as well. If there's nothing else to add, is there anything from the city, city side, city manager, city attorney, anything else from?
I, I just want to say, I know I heard Commissioner Hay speaking about, about the expansion of the CRA. You know, going through the budget process, this is my first budget process that I went through, and I know we absorbed the Pirate's Fest, which was about $380,000 we had also include. So I just want the board to be cognizant of any expansion is going to be taking those ad valorem revenues away from the city, giving them to the CRA. So it obviously depended upon the parcels that are absorbed or expanded into, but whether or not they're affluent or blighted areas, it's still going to be some revenue cuts to the city.
At the end of the day, it would still benefit the city of Boynton Beach, right?
Not necessarily, if you have to cut services, because we have 884 full-time employees that provide 16 different services and departments to those citizens. So we have to create a balance with the CRA and their redevelopment of some of those blighted areas, which I understand that is also important, but it's a balancing, a balancing act essentially. Because you have city services that provide vital services to the citizens, and you still want to redevelop those areas. I just want to make sure that the board understands that those revenues, wherever the expansion lands, are going to cut into the city's budget.
But if those, if those properties were developed, would it not create the same scenario that you're talking about?
No, because those revenues are going to go back into the CRA's budget. It's no different than what we have now with Town Square. The projects that this, the commission approved going forward with time equities, developing those two towers, all of those revenues in the form of property taxes are going to go back into the CRA's coffers because it's in the CRA district.
Point well taken.
All right, well, thank you so much. And on the CRA side, any closing comments or final comments to add?
No, we just will continue to work with the city and cost share some of the things just as we did with Town Square, where we're paying the debt service for the city. So we, we try to help where we can, and eventually, I think, you know, we will sunset. And with this project, what I'm hoping is there's going to be a transition so that, you know, when the city does receive the, you know, the revenue, there's also some transition, because there's going to always be redevelopment and maintenance. You know, what's, what's new now in 20 years may not be new. So there's always going to be maintenance costs with anything you do with public works, so.
All right, well, thank you so much. I believe we have majority. I'm going to turn now to council if you require any further clarification on the direction. It's very clear, it sounds like we're going to move forward with that amendment for task one. Is that sufficient direction?
I, I think that's all we need, we just need staff direction. And so we will bring the scope of the proposal for the RFP back to the CRA board for...
I, I just want to make sure, again, the direction after this, we'd like to work with staff, there's a couple departments that, that would like, you know, to have some input on there, utilities and engineering. And also, if the board would still want this to go before the crab board for input, because that was the last direction and assignment you had, once the crab board is, is, the members are reappointed and they have their orientation.
I don't.
I don't either, for the simple reason that normally would be in the opposite order. If anything, if we, if we're making a decision now, why send it back only to have a potential conflict? It should have been done in the opposite order. But that is not the fault of anybody, it's just practicality, right?
Yeah, no for me on crab board.
All right, sounds good.
Clear direction, thank you.
All right, so just to be clear, you are going to go ahead and get these priced out, you're going to come back with more information?
No, we are going to go ahead and get last set of comments from the city departments, then we're going to revise that and work with the attorneys for the language for the deliverables, for the research, for the contraction, as well as the expansion, if that's the case. We're going to bring it back, the final RFP to the board for decision, to issue it out and advertise.
So you're going to get additional staff comments?
Yes.
I, I was under the impression you had already received additional staff comments, city staff comments.
We've been asked for one or two more departments to have a little more time. So we're, we're going to circle back again, it's been months, I think they probably have adequate time by now, but, um, but we will make sure that you'll see the final before we advertise and release it out to the public for responses to be received. And we'll come back with the timeline for you as well, so like any other RFP, it'll take its course then through the CRA board.
All right, well, thank you so much, everybody, for partaking in the meeting. If there, if there's nothing else, I'd like a motion to adjourn.
But who?
All right, there's a motion to adjourn, and there is a second motion from Board Member Hay, second from Board Member Kelly. All those in favor of adjourning, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. This meeting is adjourned. Thank you so much. And for those of you that are in attendance, we will be resuming at 6:30 for the regular CRA board meeting. Thank you.